I think we're ready to begin. I'd like to welcome everyone to our July 13th, 2021, City Council meeting. In the interest of government transparency with regards to deliberations and decisions made by the City Council and according to open meeting law, since this meeting was posted as a Zoom meeting, this meeting is recorded by video and audio and will be conducted by remote participation. Additionally, all votes taken by the City Council during this and future remote meetings will be by roll call vote. If you're calling in on a phone, you can press star nine to request to speak. If you're watching on a computer device, there's a raised hand button that you can tap or press to request to speak. Please use either of these options during oral communications to be recognized to speak. Additionally, all votes taken by the City Council during this and future remote meetings will be by roll call vote. If your call, we already discussed that. So I'd like to announce the councilors that are on the call tonight. We have Barry Pat, Melissa Cox, Jen Holgrim, John McCarthy, Sean Nolan. I do not see Jamie. And Steve LeBlanc will not be here tonight, nor will Scott Memhardt. Think I called everyone?
And you are here.
Oh, yes. And I'm Val Gilman. Thank you, Barry. Representing city staff, we have John Dunn, our CFO. We have Greg Katamatory, our Planning Director, as well as Krista Karanda, who is our Assistant CAO. So we're ready to begin. So Madam Clerk, would you please call the first order of business?
First order of business is oral communications.
The public shall have the opportunity at every regularly scheduled meeting to be heard under oral communications on matters not appearing on the agenda. Oral communications shall allow any resident who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to city business to appear before the council, state their problem without debate, and the matter shall be referred to the proper agency through the office of the mayor. The resident will be notified within a two-week period relative to the disposition of same, and a copy shall be forwarded to the City Council. Person speaking under oral communication shall be limited to three minutes each. The council president shall not allow complaints as to individual performance. Madam Clerk, please call the next order of business.
Of course, we have to see if anybody is going to. I don't see any hands up for oral communications.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Thanks, Joanne. Is there anyone here, members of the public that would like to speak? Please raise your hand.
I don't see any.
No. I don't either. Okay. Thank you, Joanne. Madam Clerk, please call the next order of business.
The next order of business is a presentation from Greg Katamatory, Planning Director, regarding the update on community and development activities.
Good evening, councilors. Greg Katamatory, Planning Director. And again, I won't call it a presentation. I just wanted to update you on a couple of efforts so that you could also reach out to your constituents. We've been just beginning a campaign to publicize a few things, and so I wanted to bring them to your attention. And if I could, I'll share my screen real quickly. And can everybody see that okay? So one of the efforts is the Open Space Committee, working with staff, myself, the Conservation Agent, as well as Gemma Wilkins in my office. We are supporting them in this effort along with MAPC. And this has been kind of a little bit of a struggle over the past year to get things going, but things are ramping up. And one of the things we really want to publicize is that there is a fairly in-depth Open Space and Recreation Plan Survey that is now available for the public to participate in until August 6. So if you go to the city website and navigate to the Open Space and Recreation Committee page, you'll see a link right at the very top. You click on that, it'll take you to a flyer of information about the survey. And then further, once you click to actually engage in the survey, either, again, this also works on mobile devices, you can either click the link or also scan the code, which will take you to the actual survey itself. It takes about 15 minutes. We'll ask some information about individuals filling it out so that we can get a better sense of who's participating, maybe where you live in the community. It also is available to residents from outside the community that use Gloucesters Open Spaces, and really will give us a good snapshot of the community needs and concerns surrounding open space at this time. So again, it's been shared through the city Facebook page, mayor's Facebook page, and multiple shares from that as well. So we hope to really broadcast a wide net to get people to participate, including families and youth that also use, this is not just passive open space, but it's also our recreational open spaces, our beaches, all the special places that we all use. And so again, plug it far and wide. We will probably continue to drop in on public meetings and also using a lot of different networking tools to do email blasts and the like to get people to participate. There was an initial survey associated with the open house that was held several months back. We had about 140 participants. I believe the Chairwoman Heidi Wakeman, she's hoping to bat 1,000. So we'd love to get a lot of folks involved and also different user groups. So please share that widely, and I'll leave that at that unless anybody has any questions, and I'll move on to another quick announcement.
Counselors, any questions on the Open Space and Recreation Plan? And I'd just like to add that our mayor is on the call, Sephardio May, who will take in, and our auditor, Kenny Coster. So welcome to both of you. Questions, councilors?
And well, I would also add that we'll be doing an all-city email blast as well. So you'll also have the direct link if you want to share any way you'd like, you know, via email or via text linking it to people so that they can participate.
Great. Thank you.
And another quick one is over the past now, wow, six months, a very, very slow start but building, is the harbor planning effort. The mayor appointed a committee back in December, eight-member committee. Rick Noonan is the chair. And over the course of the spring, and I'm sorry, I also have to mention that John McCarthy is the liaison for the council. Over the course of the spring, was really kind of focused on bringing a consulting group on board. So now we have a kind of a five-member team led by Uteal, who actually had their hand in the last harbor plan that was completed in 2014. And they are in the process right now of a lot of data gathering, and will begin to start to make presentations, informational presentations to the Harbor Plan Committee. And that will further kind of start to build towards public engagement this fall. Hopefully, we can all cross our fingers face to face. But we'll also have a number of ways to engage with the public even in the interim. And one of the things-
Greg, would you take a moment just to remove your screenshot so we can see you?
I was sorry, I was gonna use, continue to use a little visual. I should have moved onto that immediately.
I was looking for your face, but now you're into the plan. So that's great.
Okay. So, so this is live at this point. It's still a website that's kind of in development and progress. But I just wanted to make sure that people are aware of it. We will obviously continue to use the city website for our required open meeting law posting. But we will be kind of compiling all the data that's gathered and developed during this process on this website, which is harborplan.gloster-ma.gov. Again, looks very familiar, like our city website. It will link off of also the Harbor Plan Committee webpage. But anyone that wants to stay abreast of what's going on with the harbor planning effort can bookmark that page. It will have things like, every meeting will have the agenda, the video recording if we are remote, as well as minutes and any presentations that were provided at that meeting. And then also, this will be a site that eventually will have interaction associated with it as well. There'll always be an opportunity for a general comments at the very end of, if you click around and navigate on the site, there'll be ways to directly comment on anything that people have seen related to the planning effort. And then there will also be interactive means on pages that will be developed in the future. So again, just kind of an update of a couple of things, you know, coming along, but really wanted to in particular highlight the, the open space survey, because again, that's the time is now. We hope that it's ample time for people to participate in it as well. It will be open until August 6. And then again, Harbor Plan Committee has a meeting tomorrow afternoon. Some of those, again, are really informational and have been conducted during daytime. They are available to be viewed through the city website and also will be posted to the project website. And then again, later this summer, there'll be individual stakeholder engagement, and then more public meeting settings, hopefully when we can all gather in a room en masse.
Great. Thank you. Any questions to Greg from members of the council?
Okay, with that-
We're all set. Thanks so much.
Have a wonderful evening.
Thanks for all your help.
Take care.
Madam Clerk, please call the next order of business.
The next order of business is the consent agenda.
Counselors, would anyone like to pull any matters off the consent agenda? Is there someone that would like to move the consent agenda?
Moved.
Second. Second. Counsel Cox moved it. Holgrim seconded. Discussion, roll call, vote. I can do that quickly. Counsel Pat?
Yes.
Counsel Cox?
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counselor Holgrim?
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy?
Yes.
Counsel Nolan?
Yes.
And that's it. The yeses have it. Six in favor, zero opposed. We also have a unanimous consent agenda. Would someone like to move that?
Moved.
Second. Counsel Cox moved it. Holgrim seconded. Roll call, vote. Counsel Pat?
Yes.
Counsel Cox?
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Holgrim?
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy?
Yes.
Counsel Nolan?
Yes.
The yeses have it. Six in favor, zero opposed. Madam Clerk, please call the next order of business.
Next order of business is the Budget and Finance Standing Committee Report of July 8.
Great. Counsel Cox, thank you.
Thank you. I present to you a consent agenda for the meeting from July 8. If anybody has any questions about it, please speak your mind now, or I'm going to move the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, we've got a movement and we've got a second discussion. Roll call, vote. Counsel Pat?
Yes.
Counsel Cox?
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Holgrim?
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy?
Yes.
Counsel Nolan?
Yes.
The yeses have it. Six in favor, zero opposed.
Okay, excuse me, Madam Chairperson. Just a quick question. When you're announcing these votes, should you be announcing that three absent when you, you know, six, zero, and three, or is that not necessary? I just, you know, I just, I just don't know the procedure.
I think it's good for me to announce that. So thank you, Counselor. I'll make sure that I do that. So we have the next order of business. Counsel Cox. We've done. Go ahead.
It's the Planning and Development of July 7.
Okay. And there was no meeting for ordinances and administration on July 5 because of the holiday, right?
Madam Chair?
Yep.
Counselor O'Hara is here.
Oh, thank you. Okay, Planning and Development Report for July 7, 2021. On a motion by Counsel Gilman, seconded by Counsel Pat, the Planning and Development Committee voted by roll call, two in favor, zero opposed, one technical difficulties, Holgrim, to recommend the City Council approve the foregoing conservation restriction from Dennis McGurk to Essex County Green Belt Association, Inc., as being in the public interest pursuant to Section 32 of Chapter 184 of the Mass General Law, specifically for Essex County Green Belt Association for Concord Street, 2086, Assessor's Map, 249 Lot 25. And I so move.
Second.
So we're happy to have Maggie Brown here tonight, and-
To the chair?
Yes.
There was a 286, number 286, not 2086.
Thank you, Counsel Nolan. Do I need to amend that, or can we just correct that as 286?
I think it's fine just being corrected.
Okay, thank you. So Maggie Brown, would you be kind enough to, to discuss this for us and see if the councilors have any questions before we vote? Thank you.
Absolutely. Yeah. Hello. My name is Maggie Brown. I'm Land Conservation Project Manager at Essex County Green Belt. And we're discussing the conservation restriction at 286 Concord Street from Mr. Dennis McGurk to Green Belt. The conservation will, restriction will protect the entire one-acre parcel, and it will protect it in its scenic and natural state forever. This parcel is a key conservation network parcel at that intersection of Concord Street and Thompson Street, where there are already several existing Green Belt conservation restrictions and connecting to Green Belt fee properties reservations. So it is a really keystone parcel to protect. And Green Belt is seeking approval of the conservation restriction, as it has been approved by the EEA Division of Conservation Services, been reviewed and approved by the Gloucester Conservation Commission Planning Development Committee. So I'm happy to try and answer any questions if there are any.
Counselors, any question to ask Maggie? Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. We've had any, any more discussion? Counsel Cox?
I just would like to say thank you to Dennis for doing this donation. I, there's no better partner than Essex and Green Belt. So it's between the two of them, they're definitely making our world better parcel by parcel. So thank you both.
Counsel Holgrim?
Echoing Counselor Cox, I'd like to thank Mr. McGurk for his generosity and Maggie for your work. It's very exciting.
Counsel Pat?
Yes, I'd like to echo what was said. Thank you to Dennis, and thank you to Essex Green Belt for continuing to have us grow our conservation areas. And I'd like to just hear from the ward counselor what his thoughts are.
Counsel Nolan, the ward counselor.
Dennis is a great man, and it's a very vulnerable area where development is becoming rampant. There's a lot of work to be done and to be had to keep it the way that things are. I'm very happy with the relationship he has with Essex County Green Belt and Maggie to make this happen. It's very generous. And I think this is a great start to a future where we need to restrict different things and keep the peace. Thank you.
Thank you. And I see Counselor O'Hara has his hand up.
Thank you. I just want to extend us and say thank you to Dennis McGurk again for his generous donation. Thank you.
Well, thank you all. It doesn't look like Dennis is on the call tonight. And that's too bad, but I will extend your messages to him.
We were happy he was at P and D. So thank you, Maggie. I think we're ready for our vote. So Counsel Pat?
Yes.
Counsel Cox?
100% yes.
Counsel Gilman, absolutely yes. Counsel Holgrim?
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy?
Thank you, and yes.
Counsel Nolan?
To the moon and back, yes.
Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
Seven in favor, zero, two absent. Next order of business, Madam Chair?
Thank you all.
And City Clerk?
Next order of business is the first scheduled public hearing, Public Hearing 2021-022, Application of Nicholas Giuglone, owner of property Angela Porcaccini, trustee of the Angelina quote parentheses Angela Porcaccini, DMD, Invocable Trust, for an open-air parking permit at Long Beach Road, number 2, map 180, lot 1, pursuant to Gloucester Code of Ordinances, Chapter 22, Section 22-153.
Like to open the public hearing and ask Joe Fabozzer, attorney representing the applicant, to speak in favor.
Hi, good evening. For the record, my name is Joel Fabozzer. I'm attorney at Seaside Legal Solutions, 123 Main Street here in Gloucester. I'm here on behalf of Nicholas Giuglone. He is the applicant. The owner of the property is Angela Porcaccini, and she's under contract to sell it to my client. Hold on one moment. I'm going to shut that window behind me because it's getting noisy downtown Gloucester. Hold on one sec. Okay, there we go. So for those of you who didn't have a chance to attend or view P and D, this is one of those situations where I'm in front of the City Council, asking for a license to let the property continue doing exactly what it's been doing, exactly the same way it's been doing it. But because ownership is transferring, we need to get a new license. And the brief explanation behind that is there's two layers of what I'll call permitting on this. One is your typical permitting through zoning. And like all zoning permits and zoning uses, it quote-unquote runs with the land. So as title to the property transfers, the use can be continued from a zoning perspective. However, for open-air parking spaces, there's an additional license that needs to be granted by the City Council, and that is specifically called out in the Code of Ordinances as non-transferables, that every time property transfers, you have to come back to the City Council and get a brand-new license. Otherwise, the license that's currently in the property would not be expiring until 2022. The conditions that were set forth in the motion, in the recommendation from P and D, are nearly identical to the ones that were approved four years ago for the current license. There was a slight modification because both the fire chief and building inspector have issued additional memos. So there's older memos from four years ago, and there's newer memos from this go-around. And that P and D, there was a notice from the building inspector about the parking space count and showing the plans, and that has already been corrected both in the field and in subsequent filings, I think, with the last license go-around. So basically, like I said in the beginning, I'm here looking for a license in the name of Nicholas Giuglone, the purchaser, to continue using Two Long Beach as an open-air parking lot in the exact same configuration with the exact same parameters as it has been used for quite some time now. If you have any questions, I'm happy to delve deeper into it, but I think it's pretty basic.
Thank you, Joe. Anyone else like to speak in favor? Seeing none, anyone would like to speak in opposition? Seeing none. Any correspondence? City Clerk, Joanne?
There was one communication that was forwarded to you today from Greg Berger in support of this application.
Okay, thank you. And counsel questions? I see Counsel Nolan raised his hand first. Go ahead.
Not actually a question. I did get a last-minute call before the meeting from Bob Why Not, who had asked to put his name in that he's in support of this, and that he's never had a problem with it before, and he thinks the transition will be smoothly. So I'd be remiss if I didn't bring that up.
Thank you. Counsel Pat?
Yes. Again, mine isn't so much of a question. I wish the ward counselor was here. But in the time that I have been on the council, I know there's been some questions about some parking lots in that area of the city, but this is not one of them. This permit holder, the current permit holder has a tremendous reputation for running this the correct way. And, you know, just, I want to say thank you to, you know, to her for having done so over the years to do it in the way that they, you know, should be run. So, you know, I'll be, I'll be supporting this going forward.
Thank you. Counsel Cox?
I just wanted to say that this property is going from a well-respected, responsible business owner to another well-respected business owner. So I look forward to seeing what they do with the property as far as keeping it clean and everything and well-managed like he does his downtown property. So I am definitely in support of this.
So any, any more questions before we close the public hearing? Okay, I'd like to close the public hearing and do the committee report. On a motion by Counsel Gilman, seconded by Counsel Holgrim, the Planning and Development Committee voted by roll call, three in favor, zero opposed, to grant a license to Nicholas Giuglone pursuant to MGL, Chapter 148, Section 56, and GCO, Section 22-153, for an open-air parking lot at Two Long Beach Road, Gloucester Mass, with the conditions and restrictions listed as follows. Number one, the city clerk shall not issue the license until the applicant presents a legally valid documentation of the property owner's permission, or B, legally valid documentation that proves ownership of the property pursuant to GCO 22-53, Section A. Two, that this license shall be valid from July 15, 2021 through April 30, 2026, upon payment of the appropriate fees to the city clerk. Three, that prior to the issuance of the license by the city clerk, the applicant shall pay over to Cape and Motor and the sum of $100 for the maintenance of the Gloucester portion of Long Beach. Four, that the number of cars allowed to park on that lot at any one time is limited to 21. Five, that one space of the 21 spaces allowed is to be designated handicap parking. Six, that the individual parking spaces shall be delineated and be in accordance with a lot plan approved by the building inspector dated June 22, 2016, and on file in the city clerk's office, and per the building commissioner's memo dated July 7, 2021, in that the two spaces located in the middle of the lot be compliant to Section 4.1.4 (9(c) of the city's zoning ordinance, which requires that the travel lane be 14 feet wide. Seven, that the grass in the parking lot be kept short. Eight, that an attendant shall be on duty at all times during hours of operations. Nine, that the fire chief and building inspector approve the parking plan, see building inspector memo dated December 29, 2016, email from fire chief dated January 4, 2017, memo from fire chief dated July 6, 2021, and memo from building commissioner dated July 7, 2021. Ten, that the applicant obtains and keeps current or favorable restroom inspection from the Board of Health. Eleven, that the parking lot maintains a carry-in, carry-out trash policy, and ensures such a policy is adhered to by its paying patrons. Twelve, that four shrubs that were placed on the property of Budding Cliff Road are maintained. Thirteen, signage, the following shall be posted and assigned to be erected by the applicant. The size and location of said sign to be agreed with the building inspector. A, fee for parking. B, number of cars allowed by the license. C, location of restrooms and hours they are open. D, hours of operation. E, beach regulations. F, parking lot trash policy of carry-in, carry-out. Number 14, that the license fee is to be paid- Number fourteen, that the license fee is to be paid yearly to the city clerk on April thirtieth. The application is to be reviewed by the city council in five years unless it deems that. There is a cause to review the license sooner due to any violations of conditions herein. Fifteen, the city of Gloucester shall not be held liable for any claims incurred by the parking lot operation. Sixteen, that the applicant obtain a certificate of insurance in the aggregate amount of one million dollars. Naming the city of Gloucester as a certificate holder and that the coverage run for the duration of the yearly license and I so move. Second. Counselors, is there a discussion? Joanne?
Counsel Gilman, I think when you read the first paragraph, there's a typo in there. It's Gloucester Code of Law and this is section twenty two, twenty two dash one fifty three A and not fifty three A.
Okay, counselors without objections, can we accept that Scribner's error? Correction. Okay, thank you, Joanne. Appreciate that. So we have a motion, we have a second discussion. Counsel Pat?
Yes, I'd just like to thank Angela for the all the years of running a really professional. You know, parking lot. Some people may think it's not much of a, you know, a big deal. But it's been run very, very well and we wish her the best and I'm sure that as Counselor Cox had said that. Mr. Gigoloni will do. Do well with it as. The Gigolones do with their properties in the community.
Thank you, counselor. I also like to recognize that Angela is on the call tonight and she was also at P and D. So welcome, Angela. We're glad that you're here. Thank you. Anyone else like to to discuss this? So we're ready for roll call vote. Counsel Pat?
Yes.
Counsel Cox?
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Holgrum?
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy?
Yes.
Counsel Nolan?
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
Seven in favor, two absent. Thank you, Joe.
Very much.
Appreciate it. Next order of business, Madam Chair, City Clerk?
Next order of business is public hearing twenty twenty one dash zero twenty three. To amend the Gloucester Code of Ordinances, chapter twenty two, section twenty two dash two seventy point one, resident sticker parking only. Six AM to six PM from May first to September fifteenth in section twenty two dash two ninety one. Toway zones by adding Marshfield Street.
Thank you. Would like to open the public hearing. Anyone here like to speak in favor? See, hold on. Seeing none, anyone like to speak in opposition? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, is there are there any correspondence?
There is none.
Counselors, any questions? Okay, so I'd like to close the public hearing and ask Counsel Nolan, Chair of O and A, to make his committee recommendation.
The ordinance administration committee voted by roll call three in favor, zero opposed to recommend the city council amend. G C O, chapter twenty two, section twenty two, three seventy dot one, resident sticker parking only. Six AM to six PM, May first till September fifteenth. In section twenty two dash nine, two ninety one, towway zones by adding Marshfield Street. Nice move.
Second.
We have a motion made by Counsel Nolan and seconded by Counsel O'Hara. And Counsel. Is there a discussion? Counsel Holgrum?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I brought this forward at the request of a Ward three resident who lives on Marshfield Street and with. The blessing of Ward three Counsel LeBlanc, we unfortunately. Left Marshfield Street off the list of resident only parking. But they're right off bond and they're very close to Stageford Park and they were very concerned about. Non-residents parking there. So counselors, I hope you are willing to vote in favor. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other discussion by counselors? So our roll call vote. Counsel Pat?
Yes.
Counsel Cox?
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Holgrum?
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy?
Yes.
Counsel Nolan?
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
Seven in favor, two absent. Thank you. Thank you for bringing this forward, Counsel Holgrum. Next order of business, Madam Clerk?
Is for counsel vote, the decision to adopt special city council permit twenty twenty one dash zero zero two. Webster Street number eleven, map forty seven lot thirteen Gloucester zoning ordinance, section one. Ten point one and three point one point six B, building heights in excess of thirty five feet. For the new East Gloucester Veterans Memorial School.
I move to adopt.
Second.
So we have Counsel Gilman moving and Counsel Cox seconded. Is there a discussion? Roll call vote, Counsel Pat?
Yes.
Counsel Cox?
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Holgrum?
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy?
Yes.
Counsel Nolan?
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara?
No.
Six in favor, one opposed and two absent. Thank you, counselors. Next order of business, Madam Clerk?
Counsel's request to the mayor.
Counselors. Let's let's begin with Counsel Cox. You just raised your hand. Go ahead.
I had asked, I put a council request months ago to have the space in front of Carol still. Repainted. There's no parking signs, but the white parking Ts and Ls are still present. And the parking, the no parking sign is behind the parking spot. So they don't always see it and they they see the lines before they see the sign. And a few people have complained because they've gotten a ticket for no parking. When they say it looks like a parking spot and I would have to agree with them that it does. So I was put in a few months ago. If we can get that done, that would be great. Wanted to let you guys all know. I don't know if you guys can see this. This is the cultural splash. It's happening on Thursday nights. It is a conjunction. Event between the two cultural districts. As you guys know, we're the only place in the state with two cultural districts. And we've received some funding, so we're using it to. Pump up our arts and entertainment in the downtown section and Rocky Neck. It's called Cultural Splash. It's every Thursday from four to eight PM. For July and August. It started last Thursday. And again, it's every Thursday, July and August. Kada is doing the transportation. And they are going from downtown to Rocky Neck in a loop. It's about a half an hour loop. So if you. Go down to Rocky Neck, jump off the trolley that'll pick you up. But as an added benefit, we're going to do this by land and by sea and Harbor Tours is also providing free transportation. On Thursday nights from four to eight. Between the between Rocky and I can downtown. So you can pick up the boat. At Solomon Jacobs and take it over to Rocky Neck. That is a five minute trip and it's fabulous because it's on water. So you can park downtown where there's a lot of parking. And avoid the mayhem of Rocky Neck trying to find a parking spot and just jump on the trolley. And or the the boat. So. Harbor Tours and Kada are working together for transportation. It's it's been good so far. A lot of the places in both locations have entertainment. They have artist demos and stuff like that. So. If you get the opportunity to go. Venture out on a Thursday night, it's it's great. We'd love to have your participation. We'd love to have your feedback.
Great, thank you. Counsel Nolan?
I don't have a request. I just want to make some comments. As you posted on your Facebook, I want to thank Jamie O'Hara. With his work in the blood drive, the Magnolia Library Blood Drive has been a wonderful experience for the Red Cross. I can't give blood, but I I recognize all the people that do. I know Counselor Cox and Counselor LeBlanc are constantly down there. To be ranked the number that we are for what the population is is unbelievable. And I want to thank you, Jamie, for that and the Magnolia Library Center. Also, the Magnolia Library Center is in the middle of a fundraiser for a capital improvement campaign. You can go on their website and check on their Fund Me page or show up for one of their events. It's a great community center. And they could use all the help again to continue the access and I just want to thank you again, Jamie.
Thank you, Counselor. Before we continue, I just wanted to recognize a little bit late in the game, but Jonathan Pope, the Chair of the Gloucester School Committee. And the Building Committee Chair is has been on the call. So welcome, Jonathan. So Counsel Pat, I think your hand is raised next.
Yep. Okay, thank you. Mine isn't a request. Mine's really a thank you. We know a week ago, we had our fireworks and the concert on the Boulevard. And I wanted to thank the mayor and the administration, first of all, for their financial contribution. To help us make this successful. But also to the all the departments within the administration. The Police Department, the Fire Department, the Harbor Masters Office. And especially the DPW, who went out of their way. To prepare the Cannon Fort site for this display. And then also they obviously. Don't usually get the thank yous, but they do the cleanup when we always, everyone at every event all around town, you know, leaves a mess whether we intend to or not. And I want to thank them for all that they do and all that they do when they're not seen. So thank you.
Great, thank you.
Counsel. Can I just real quick, I want to piggyback on what Barry's saying right now. Barry, I have a question for you and this only became apparent to me in the last week. They have. No, no noise fireworks, like you you get rid of the boom that scares the animals and the the. Veterans and small children and all that good stuff. Have you guys ever looked into that or is it possible? Is it more money? Is it? I'm just curious.
No, it's not. It's not a question of money. The salutes, that's what makes the noise. Sometimes you might hear a whooshing noise or something else that might be what's called a tail. Those the fireworks aren't actually, you know, being powered up in the air. That's just an attachment that, you know, shows that it's going up and that you might hear that noise. And you hear when it actually launches out of the tube, but the noises are the salutes. If you noticed during that, the COVID presentation at the start, there was absolutely no salutes whatsoever. It was totally. You know, silent. It is a big issue with most animals, most dogs especially. And other than tradition, there's nothing that says you have to put salutes in there, but. Most people do. And I will say that right now that's been actually very difficult. Because of some of the COVID situations in China and other places, it's been very difficult to get fireworks at all. Never mind. Salutes were a big problem this year, so we actually had less of them in our show than we normally do. But again. One can be enough to. Do some serious scaring of a dog or a veteran or, you know, a child or or anything. So I appreciate the commentary and, you know, we can, we can look at probably having less, but whether we would do without it. I would think that. That might be difficult to, you know, to go that far to go without them, but it's, I thank you for the, you know, the question and. I don't know of anywhere that, you know, actually does them without salutes included. We can think about doing that, maybe if.
Are we doing them in September?
Yes, yes.
So I, this is a request I'm going to make of that committee then because. I think it would be nice if one community would try it. Obviously, you're not, you're not, it's, you're probably going to get some negative feedback from it, from not having them. But I think. I would like to make the request that the committee choose not to have the salutes for one event and see how it goes. And and get the feedback from it. And I think that we might actually see people that. Would be inclined to not have the salutes actually make it a point to come to ours if we don't have them because of the. The be being able to relax as a veteran or as an animal. Somebody that might take their dog down to that kind of event that. I don't know. It would just, it would be nice to see. One event and and do it as a trial run, so.
I appreciate. I appreciate the comment and the request and maybe, you know, people can discuss this probably the easiest on social media. And they could even, there is like the Gloucester fireworks, say, on. Book or something and people can chime in and, you know, one way or another. And I'll discuss it with not only the committee, but most importantly with the American Thunder fireworks and. See if there's a possibility of, you know, we might be able to do that.
Thank you so much. And I'm sorry to interrupt. I just, that reminded me of that question.
Yeah, and and I think Counsel Pat is always humble about this, but you have played a huge leadership role. And the fireworks to happen and we all love it and enjoy it. So thank you from the bottom of our hearts for a job well.
Thirty years this year.
And and the hearts that they were showing for COVID was very special. So it was very special. Thank you. Counsel McCarthy?
Yes, I'd like to make a request to the mayor that if. She or her designee might be able to attend our next regular city council meeting. To give the council and the public an update on what's going to be going forward with the new combined school, the Webster Street area. I know schools out now and there were a lot of plans and I'm getting a lot of questions on on how we're progressing and I'm wondering if. If they may be able to come before the council next week, the two weeks and and give us an update on where we are and where we're going. And respectfully request that.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. Counsel Holgrum?
Thank you. Yes, I don't have any requests to the mayor, but I do want to make an announcement and. It has to do with my work at the North Shore Health Project. As you know, I'm the data manager or maybe you don't know, but. So I'm in the background just counting the numbers and this, the end of the fiscal year was last month and. Our Harm Reduction Center was able to exchange over one hundred thousand needles in the last fiscal year. So that was over fifty thousand needles in to the agency, over fifty thousand out and off the streets. And to the people who need them as they hopefully go through the process of. Ending their substance use disorders. So thank you. I was so excited to see that. I had almost, I really had nothing to do with it, but it was just, it was wonderful to witness and. I wanted to make you all aware of it because it's very important to to me and definitely to our city. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors want to request to the mayor or appreciate someone? Counsel?
I'd like, yes, thank you. Thank you, Counsel Nolan, for for pointing out the blood drives at the Magnolia Library. We have one, we have a Red Cross blood drive this Friday the sixteenth. Um, we have one, uh, we have a Red Cross blood drive this Friday, the 16th. And um, people can go on uh, one, uh, call 1-800 or Red Cross or go on their website. We have a lesser known blood drive on the 29th, Thursday from 12:30 to 6:30, which uh Counselor Gilman uh has signed up for and that's with Dana Farber Cancer Institute uh and the Kraft family. Um, so if people would like to participate, this is the third um Dana Farber Blood Drive. Uh, you can contact me, call me at 978-979-7533 or text, text, text me or email me uh, and we'll get you an appointment. Um, but I appreciate, I, we, we appreciate the governor and his wife um participating at the Magnolia Library Red Cross Blood Drive. It certainly um helped expose the, the need for uh blood as there's an extreme shortage. I appreciate everyone who has helped uh whether morally or actually physically. So thank you again.
Great, thank you, counselor. Um, so I have one small request to the mayor. It's regarding the no parking between signs um across from the tennis courts on River Road. Um, and I can, um, I've requested this before, so I can just take the words off of um one of the reports. But it's really important right now because um emergency vehicles just can't get through there when people are parked illegally and the ordinance covers these signs. So we just need to, to get the signs up. So um, so um, I also wanted to just say thank you to all of you. This one, Steve LeBlanc's had amazing attendance for the last two years and this was the first meeting that I've led and I appreciate the friendly comments about the few things that I um, could have done better at the beginning because we're all in this together and um, thank you for your patience with me. And um, without further ado, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second, second, okay. Uh, Counsel Cox and then Counsel McCarthy. Um, roll call, Counsel Pat?
Salute. Yes.
Counsel Cox? Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Holgram?
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy?
Good night, yes.
Counsel Nolan?
Yes, and everybody have a great night.
Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
Good night, everybody. Um, the meeting has ended. Thank you, Joanne. Thank you.
Great meeting, Val. Thank you.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.